Okay, we'll call this meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees to order. We do have a quorum here and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. We're gonna start off with a little public participation. I don't think we had anybody sign up unless Cory wants to talk, so it doesn't look like it, okay? Moving on to our continuous improvement portion, we'll have a public hearing on the Texas Academic Performance Report, also known as TAPER for 2018 and 2019.
Yeah, formerly known as AEIS and whatever it was known before that, this is your annual academic report, even though we have all of this data provided to us in August and September, it's finally been compiled and put together. And we have Jonita Martin, Executive Director of School Improvement, Dr. James Kuratin, Director of Assessment and Accountability, that will actually come to the podium and provide a brief presentation over the data that was provided in your packet, so that we can meet compliance, that we have presented this information six months or seven, eight months after we actually took the dang test. So here we go, turn it over to y'all.
Good morning, Dr. Crawford and the board. Thank you for giving us a chance to present this information. We're gonna talk about two different data sets, the TAPER report, which as Dr. Crawford pointed to, is a lot of STAR data that we've presented previously, and then there's some additional academic information that we're gonna share with y'all. And then we're also gonna present the results-driven accountability, results for our district, that's the former PBMAS, if you are familiar with PBMAS at all, this is the new system that's gonna replace that. We just call it RDA, but it's the results-driven accountability. So, we're gonna start with TAPER, I'm gonna let Ms. Ward start there.
Good morning again, and like Dr. Crawford and James said, we have presented the STAR performance and growth, so we're not gonna go over that. We would like to highlight, though, the attendance rates, some of our dropout and graduation rates, as well as our college and career and military readiness, because the TAPER is an overview of various different performance measures. So, we're gonna, again, highlight that, of course, our district, we're very proud that our district received a B in 2018. Of course, you know, we, our overall composite score was a 78, in 2019, we increased that to an 85 B. Also on the TAPER report, it gives us data not only for our district, but as well as the state and the region. And one thing we wanted to point out, in Tyler ISD, we're currently serving 75% of our students are economically disadvantaged compared to the state's 60%. However, as you can see, our overall attendance rate is slightly higher than the state's. With that in mind, the dropout rate, we are below the state in the dropout rate. As you can see, our dropout rate numbers are lower, which is what we want, and considerably lower in the ninth through 12th grade. Four-year graduation rate, and they have a five-year and a six-year, because we have some students who are continuers, meaning that they do not graduate, you know, within the four-year span. But as you can see, we are, again, considerably higher than the state in all the four-year, five-year, and six-year graduation rate. Also, with our students that are getting foundations, they are graduating with an endorsement, which is the highest level that you can graduate with in terms of college, not college, excuse me, high school diploma. We're at 7% versus the state's 4.8%. Now, the percent economically disadvantaged, this is one thing that we're really proud of and we want to highlight as well, this is percent economically disadvantaged of our graduates. So, the state is graduating, the students that are seniors, about 48% of those students are economically disadvantaged. 68% of our students are economically disadvantaged, yet we're graduating our students at a higher rate than the state. Also, the CCMR measures, which is really important, meaning that we are, because, of course, our district is focused on successful student outcomes and career and military readiness graduates, the state is graduating about 28.7% of those students are considered career or military readiness compared to Tyler ISD, 44.1%, so we're really proud of that.
We pause on that real quick. You know, there's been some, there's been some issues statewide, that they've had some pretty high graduation rates in this CCMR, and I've kinda balanced out ours compared to some of those districts that may have turned in, some that the state has questions about. So, we're in pretty good shape in regard to that. I know, I'm not gonna recall the districts up here, that's not, that wouldn't be fair. I do know them off the top of my head. But I do, I wanna make sure that the board understands, we're not just giving away these CCMR credits by having a, an assembly and stating that the students that attend that assembly are interested in going to the military. So, that's, there's some schemes that are going on out there, and I think our stuff's pretty pure, pretty pure from what I'm able to tell. Gary Brown, of course, oversees CCMR, so very trustworthy individual there. Go ahead, Jonita.
Just to add onto that a little bit, our military rate is actually below the state level, so we feel pretty comfortable with students that we say are interested in going to the military.
Right, yeah. So, there's no sway on that, I guess my point was, there's no sway on that CCMR, because the MR portion of it for us is a percent.
It's actual enlistments, right?
Yes, so the enlistment for the district is 3.2% versus the state's 4.3%.
There you go. Go ahead, Jonita, thank you.
Also, the approved industry-based certifications, and you know that this is something that we definitely, again, have been working on, we're really proud of that number as well, because 19.9% of our students are receiving those approved industry-based certifications that are approved by the state versus the state-wide percentage, 4.8. Our high school counselors are doing a great job making sure that students, when they enter into high school, that they're on a coherent sequence coursework. And as you can see here, again, the state is 38.7% versus Tyler ISD students at our high schools, 60.6% of those students are continuing through that coherent sequence coursework.
What, I guess, share with the board, James and Dr. Kuratin, excuse me, about the future of that, that measure?
Is this the CTE?
The coherent.
The coherent sequence?
Yeah.
So, the, on this year's accountability, which will feature last year's graduates, so the 2019 graduates, we'll be able to take advantage of that coherent sequence coursework one last time. That's a, any student that did not meet a CCMR measure, a different CCMR measure, we can get a half point if they completed that coursework. And so, that number is actually very, very helpful to our district. What's gonna have to happen with our current seniors, which will go into next year's accountability system, so 2021 accountability, they, as of right now, they will have to actually earn a TA-approved certification. And so, what we're trying to do is make sure that students start in that, start in a course and that they move through and finish the coursework and then earn the certification along the way.
I think parents will be happier with that, because, you know, when you ask a child to start something in eighth grade, to choose something that they're gonna be interested in to get that endorsement, it may change. And we have done our job, professionally speaking, because the state wanted us to do that, obviously they measured it, they made it important, right? To encourage students and parents to stay within the same pathway, towards the same coherent sequence of coursework. So, there's a, you know, there's something we've been very successful at that's gonna be going away, we are certainly disappointed by that. But at the same time, there's always, I think there's also a benefit there, that there's gonna be some flexibility in there for students and parents now, that we didn't currently have. I don't really have a preference either way, it's gonna be more difficult to probably score, because we had such a good system, and as far as those coherent sequences go. So, I wanna make sure we highlighted that today, because that is gonna be a change. I guess, next year at this time, we'll be reporting something different.
Correct.
Okay.
So, on the last two sections of this slide, we're looking at our AP results, as well as our dual credit results, and you know, of course, those students, if they score three, four, and five, three, four, or five on the AP exam, then that, of course, helps towards their college credits, and then our advanced dual credit course completion. These are students not just enrolling the course, but successfully completing the course. And as you can see, we are significantly above the state as well there, with 55.4% of our students versus the state's 43.4% completing, successfully completing dual credit, and the AP exams as well are above the state. So, we're excited to present that data.
Nineteen out of 26 advanced placement exams that we provide, if they score three, four, or five, we're outperforming our peers, public, private, and charter. Y'all heard me say that. It's good to hear it again. There you go.
And one of the things, go ahead, can you go back to one slide real quick? One of the things I just wanna point out, that Ms. Ward went over, is we actually, you know, we didn't outscore the state on every single CCMR measure, but if you look at the college measures there, the AP results and the dual credit, those are probably the two, two of the biggest indicators of college readiness, and we outscored the state on both of those. And then for career readiness, we did the same thing with the certifications and the CTE sequence, coherent sequence coursework. So, we just wanna point out that it is, that we are preparing students, not just for college or just for careers, but actually doing very well in both of them, so. So, now we're gonna jump over to the results-driven accountability system, the RDA system, which is the former PBMAS. If you're not familiar with this system, basically, the state just looks at several indicators through four different program areas, bilingual, career technology education, Every Student Succeeds Act, which is our federal programs, and then special ed, and they look at those indicators and see how we're scoring on them, so to speak. In the PBMAS system, it used to be a staging system, they've removed that, and now we're on to, we're being rated on performance levels. We're rated between a zero and a four. A zero means that there's no concern about that particular indicator, whereas a four would mean there's more concern. So, a higher performance level is higher concern in this particular system. So, here's how the indicators were scored for each of the four program areas. In that table, you'll see PL0, PL1, 2, 3, and 4, those are the performance levels, and you'll see for each of the four program areas, we had most of the indicators are performance level zero, except for special ed. We had only two non-zero indicators in CTE, one was rated a two and one was rated a three. And then we had some indicators rated at performance levels one, two, and three in special ed. And so, we'll look at those and see what we need to do to address that. On the right-hand side, you can see the mean of, the mean performance level for all of the indicators that were evaluated, and you can see, it's a zero for bilingual and our federal programs, and then it's below one for CTE.
Go ahead.
Just to see how this compares to our prior year, we actually improved in all four areas. So, even though we had some indicators rated as a performance level two and three in special ed, we actually improved over last year. So, we're moving in the right direction in all four program areas, and we'll continue looking at that and seeing how we can improve it.
And special ed's been improving, that trajectory's been improving here over the last three or four years as well. It's incremental gains, it's smaller gains, but at least it's going in the correct direction as opposed to the other direction.
That's all we have. If you have questions?
Are there specific strategies or plans in special ed to continue the positive trend of improvement?
I know special ed's developing a plan right now to work and see what needs to be done on those particular indicators, but it's, I think it's part of the process every year is to go through and see what we did, did we improve, and then how can we tweak that for each of those indicators?
Yeah, and I think all of our, when you start talking about the kids that are scored on SPED, that have, that are LD, learning disabled, or learning challenged, disabled's a bad, that's not my label, that's what they used to call it, learning challenged. You know, improving tier-one instruction, certainly with special ed supports, that's gonna make the positive benefit on that. And I think that kinda fits into our overall district mission, as far as improving that classroom instruction's gonna obviously benefit this as well. You know, again, Dr. George has done a fabulous job in making sure that we're going in the correct direction on here. So, you know, the compliance piece of that, on her job, is great. And then the instructional piece on there, you know, putting that burden on just the special ed staff is a, probably the wrong strategy, because the impact's gonna be through that tier-one instruction with that classroom teacher. So, I think this all fits, when you start talking about your phonics, our big phonics push that we're going on right now, I think that's gonna help, improving reading. And then, so, certainly, all this stuff was positive data that's presented to you today in your data package, you do have some other data pieces that you're more than welcome to take a look at and ask us about. But, you know, improving tier-one instructions, a big district initiative, we'll continue to do that, it's just not happening quick enough for us. It's happening, it's just trying to turn that battleship, it's pretty difficult at times. So, I think that's the best thing I can say, Jonita, or Ms. Ward, about that. You agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Improving that classroom instructions, the...
Absolutely, and like James said, while the special ed has a plan, each campus is also required to look at that data, and they're, they put strategies in their campus improvement plan to address that subpopulation as well.
Yeah, and within your domains of the accountability system, you can get tripped up by this, by the, by the special ed indicators. And so, each campus having a targeted, specific plan to know where each and every kid is and what each and every kid needs to have, as far as the resources and the additional supports, that's also the same strategy that we've used for ages, when Reverend Mason was principal, and Dr. Nation was principal, and Mr. Sterling was principal. And so, we're not giving up on those strategies as far as getting the extra time with the curriculum as well. So, a lot of RTI strategies that we've needed to repair for time, that's maybe starting to show some gains for us.
Okay, any other questions?
I continue to be challenged as I look at the African-American test scores and the level of achievement. Is there anything particularly that you have in place where you will address those needs so we can raise that level of achievement?
Yes, ma'am, of course, you know, we're continuing to be concerned with that. As Dr. Crawford said, we are targeting specific students. I know at a couple of our campuses, we're having Excel academies, which Saturday School academies, that we're targeting those students that are in need to increase their tier-one instruction, and where we actually are looking at teachers across the district, so you may not actually be a teacher at a specific campus, but if you're getting good results with a subpopulation, we're having them to come over and work, you know, specifically with students. Of course, we work with James in making sure that we center, have a center focus on those teaks that those students need, so that we can address those, not only through just tier-one instruction, but tier-two, as well as tier-three instruction.
Now, I've been on a couple of campuses, Dr. Crawford, where I noticed, I don't know if you call it your war room, or what type of room you call it, but the data is disaggregated. And you can walk in and principal is able to tell you, we're doing da-da-da-da-da. Is that taking place on every campus, and those students have been identified?
Absolutely. We have domain-one worksheets where the teachers have their specific data, as well as they're looking at the data as a grade level. You may, some of the campuses have it electronically, because they're using Edgigen, but every campus definitely has a process, because we have a district-wide data protocol system that we use. So, after we give a benchmark, we just completed middle-of-the-year map, then we're definitely going in and having data talks with those principals, the master teachers, and they're developing plans for those particular students. But they can definitely tell you by subgroups which students need additional assistance to move them to the next level.
And the data does include the ethnicity of those students.
Right.
And if there's anything above and beyond that needs to occur culturally, that does happen. I think for so long in education, we were doing the culturally, cultural saturation, and then just a little bit of academics. It's academics, and then if you can provide some cultural enhancement for that student, I think that's the direction that we go. Some of those data rooms you talk about have the kid's picture up there. So, it gets to that acute level of knowing that individual student's needs and not just this large group, because even within that group, they're gonna have individual needs and different strategies to actually reach them, either academically or socially. One thing we didn't talk about is, is the opportunities for Rose City Summer Camps. That's, we hope that our parents, and we're gonna, starting up with Mentoring Alliance, recruiting and advertising and marketing that this summer for Bolter. So, I think that's gonna be a very nice little supplement that we're gonna have to our instructional year, if our community will take advantage of it. It's a great program, y'all seen the data about Mentoring Alliance, and that they don't slip whenever they go through that program. If they can, as long as they don't slip when they go through the program, they come back to us at a very similar level that they left us, we're gonna have some, some gains on that.
While I'm impressed with the summer camps, if you remember, a couple of years ago, I've always asked the question, are we dealing with intensive instruction for those students that need it during those summer camps?
Yeah, but it's a little, it's a little, it's a different version of it. The version is that you're a little bit freer, that there's no accountability attached to it, there's no, well, there's, there's formative assessments that continue, and there's not this end-to-football game that you have to play at the very end. I think when you free teachers up for that, certainly they're in smaller groups as well, absolutely, that's a better strategy than what we have just during the normal school year. And we do some of that during the normal school year, but being able to do that in the summer is something I think's very effective, and the data's not lying. I mean, certainly kids that go through the program and take advantage of at least eight weeks out of the 12 in the summer, I think that's what we, that's the mark that we put, maybe nine, they're being successful coming out of there. So, highly recommend that the Mentoring Alliance opportunity, Rose City Summer Camps, is something, a strategy we can continue to build on, so much that, you know, next week at the board meeting, we're looking at a different calendar, just so we can access more funding for some of that summer programming, so that we can get more kids in it. I think one of y'all ran your campaign saying you wanna get 3,000 kids in Rose City Summer Camps. That's a lot, that's two times more than what we're doing right now. So, that'd be great, we wanna do it. We know, we know what the data is as far as our economically disadvantaged kids are, and our economically, our advantaged kids, excuse me, going through that would be, would be awesome.
One, one last question. Does the campus receive a campus report card?
Yes, ma'am, and they are posted on their campus website.
It's on the website, so we can access it by going to each campus?
That's correct.
Okay, I'd like to see that. A lot of times, it's interesting to see how your different groups are doing on each campus. And I want to conclude by saying, the school district cannot do it alone. We accept our challenge, and we believe in educating our students to the highest level, but I also know that we need the home and the community to work along with us.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How are we communicating? I'm just asking from my own personal knowledge, how are we recruiting the students for the summer program? How's that done?
So, obviously the advertising, but we've also got campus staff that identifies students that could potentially make, benefit from going to that. Obviously, we've got some campuses where 100% of the kids would, would benefit from going there. You know, as far as what we're adding at Bolter this year, as far as the enrollment goes, there's gonna be some opportunities for scholarships and reduced funding based upon the economic status of that, that child. So, our campuses do a good job pushing kids towards the Rose City Summer Camps. As far as the summer, the summer sessions as well, or, excuse me, the Saturday sessions as well, Ms. Ward, our administrators and our counselors are identifying those students who would benefit greatly from going to those as well.
Provide transportation as well.
Transportation's provided, we feed them as well.
Yes.
We also feed them on Saturdays. So, I think there's a lot of effort that's going into this, as far as identifying those students and marketing these programs to our, to our community as well. I think you'd, I've used this colloquialism already once, you'd be living under a rock to not know what we're doing. Now, people may tell you they don't know what we're doing, but with social media, with the communication that goes out from our campuses, I'm tired of Jack Elementary telling me what's going on. We're getting, we're getting saturated, it's just, it's, it's the ability to get those parents to access that program in the summer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, guys, appreciate you. We have an opportunity now for public slash board comments. I don't think we have anybody in the public that wants to speak on that, and the board has commented and spoken, so going to the PBMAS, results-driven accountability, we already did that, didn't we?
We did that. It's now called RDA instead of P, somebody changed the acronym.
Okay, moving along to our facilities rental and usage update.
In your packet, we have the facility rental and usage update, it's our responsibility to present to the board when we do make these changes. Is it every two years? Yeah, every two years, we've got that that comes in front of y'all. So, Mr. Ron Jones, Chief of Staff, Assistant Superintendent's gonna be here to provide the update to the facility usage, rental and usage agreements.
Well, good morning there, Board President Washman, Trustees and Dr. Crawford. Jean Marie, I see you up there too, good morning. In addition to myself being here, I would be remiss if I didn't give acknowledgement to Mr. Vog for his work on this process, for bringing us to the, into the 21st century as far as our facilities rental process goes. This has become a labor of love for me over the, my five years here, you know, in making these changes here. And I will be very brief in this summary of what's going on with the process. First of all, we've updated the handbook to bring cohesion between our practice and policy. So, that is one thing you should have a copy of the, of the handbook as well. And the facilities rental process is now completely online, and we have an infographic that Mr. Vog can put on the screen for you to be able to have a visual of what that process looks like, as it, as it pertains to the, the flow of actually going from the start to the finish of getting access to the facility in which an individual desires. Also, our, the, the fees have been increased 5% over this timeframe to take care of the increase in our processing fees for the electronic payment process. So, that, that's the only fee increase that we have, it's a 5% across the board in the facilities rental process. We have the ability, right now, that we put the onus for saying yes or no to facility rental where it should be at this point. All of the contract processes are electronic, the requirements for insurance, all of those things are taken care of electronically, one-stop shopping now to, to have access to our facilities. Mr. Vog, did I miss anything?
I covered it, sir.
All right, that's, that's all I have for you, I'm here for questions now.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Mr. Jones, when you take a car in, they usually walk around the car to see what damage is already there, so I won't be going and arguing when I receive it back that I didn't, that wasn't there. So, is there someone who walks with, a person who's interested in leasing our facility, walk around with them to check everything out before it's leased?
We absolutely will have a checklist that shows the condition of the facility before you get it, and we'll walk it after you're done to see if there are any damages that you will be responsible for after, in the process.
All right.
All right.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Mr. Jones?
So, you'll actually have this at the, at the board meeting, GKD, right? Yeah, for, for consideration a week from tonight? And, you know, I know one, sometimes, sometimes when these things come up, I've read in other districts that if you go up on a fee, people kinda freak out about that, but, you know, you can't get them for free, there is some wear and tear associated with this, there's custodial that has to occurs well, but we're not out of line with other event centers and auditoriums here in Tyler, Texas. We provide a very good deal and a very good service with our facilities. We wish we could just go ahead and let everyone just use them, but that just, it just, you've gotta have a little bit of control on that to make sure that you, the things we talked about, the depreciation and the, the maintenance that occurs after this too. Plus, we wanna keep them clean for y'all and for our public and our community. So, I don't think we're out of line with, with going up a little, this little bit of a bump, we haven't done much in a while, in fact, we went forever without doing that. So, as things have gone up, the price of a floor cleaner, or the price of a mop, or the price of, of the wage of a custodian has gone up. The usage fee, as far as the electronic usage fee that we're using, that they go up. So, we've been very conservative on that increase, but at the same time, we wanna make sure that we were transparent about it and talked about it in front of y'all right here.
That, that is in the process, so people will have access to log on and see what they're actually renting.
Yeah, and that'll coincide with a facility video portfolio that I think Communications has been working on now for about a year. It'll, it'll kind of apex whenever we finally get the high schools redone, so.
Yes, indeed.
Little marketing strategy.
Yep.
Well, good deal. Appreciate you.
Thank you. See you, Tasha.
Okay, and then, and then we'll have our first reading of this facilities and rental usage handbook.
Yeah, you have it right now. That's your first reading.
And next week, we'll maybe act on that. Okay, we're to the portion of our meeting for executive session. A few things to talk about in there, so we'll go ahead and adjourn for executive session.